You're very well read.
I was very proud of us. I did pretty good on Jeopardy last night, too.
I don't.
Oh, we've watched every night. We watched these, we'll Lester Hall, Wheel Fortune, Jeopardy, British Murder Mist. That's my life.
Madam Mayor, six oh four, and we are live.
Thank you very much, Madam, uh, Madam Clerk, whoever you are. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March fourth, twenty twenty five, meeting of the Lake, regular meeting of the same, uh, of the Lake Worth Beach. May we, sorry, I'm just, may we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Betty Rash?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sarah Maliga. I'm sorry, I want to make sure I can hear you, that your mics weren't.
As zent.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Christopher McVoy.
Here.
Commissioner Mimi May.
Here.
Commissioner Reynaldo Diaz.
Present.
Thank you very much for that two of them tonight. Invocation will be led by Commissioner Diaz and the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner May.
All right, um, so today we read a proclamation starting Palm Beach Pride Month, and, you know, regardless of how you may feel regarding that proclamation in that community, I think it's easy to recognize, um, that there is a really significant portion of our community who, quite frankly, are living in fear. There's a lot of uncertainty, there's a lot of fear out there, there is just kind of wondering and wondering if there is a safe place available for them. And, you know, that, quite frankly, leads to certain issues, and I know I myself has, has had friends who have been personally affected by this and taking their own life or, uh, being victims in other ways. And so in your own way, let's have a moment of silence for those affected. Amen.
I do leave it to the line of the United States of America.
The agenda, are there any additions, deletions, or reordering? Bless you.
Yes, I have an addition. So, new business B, an emergency purchase order with big truck rental for rearload refuse truck rentals for public work, solid waste division was added. Again, that's new business B.
Okay, thank you very much.
And can we also move presentation? Yeah. Can we also move the proclamation declaring March twenty twenty five as Palm Beach Pride Month to the consent agenda since we just did it outside?
Sounds good. Any problems with that?
No, I agree with that.
Okay, great. Anything else? All right. Uh, all in favor of the new agenda?
I need a motion in a second, please.
A motion to approve as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, next up is the public participation of non-agenda items and consent agenda. I don't have any cards yet, but I'm sure I will. If you want to make a comment, you have to come up, just fill out a blue card. All are welcome. Ginny Powell, followed by Catherine Colmeyer.
Ginny Powell, two two four North Palm Way. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. In twenty twenty two, the Sherrett and Downtown Parcels Master Plan were supported by four of you on the dais to guide development of the L and M property. The plan emphasized a smaller incremental infill development that respects the historic character of our downtown. Following this, the city intended to hire a consultant to develop an RFP that aligned with the master plan, but this never happened. About that time, Mr. Arthur Weiner appeared on our doorstep after pitching a very similar proposal to the city of Tamarack. He had halted negotiations with Tamarack in mid-September twenty twenty three due to their requirement for affordable housing. If you believe that Mr. Weiner chose Lake Worth Beach out of genuine inflection for our city, I think you're mistaken. It appears that he was running out of options. Initially, the project seemed promising, the W Moda project. It has since become clear that W Moda is a personal art collection and not a museum, nor is it world famous simply by claiming it so. The development is too large for our downtown. We know the CRA is allocating one point four million for affordable housing, so that's a big bonus compared to what Tamarack was offering, which was nothing. Additionally, a questionable parking garage will largely be funded by Lake Worth Beach taxpayers. All of this contradicts the Downtown Parcels Master Plan. With millions lost on the Bohemian Garage, it's hard to understand why we still lack guarantees for the city's proposed nineteen million dollar investment in W Moda. I feel you rushed this complex project, only revealing specifics in late September, then voting very shortly after that, and that ensured that few people were aware of it. If it's true as you claim that the city can walk away anytime, that's been repeated many times, now is the time to run, not walk away, and start the RFP process as soon as possible, so we can pursue a development more aligned with the incremental infill type project residents requested. Many of them are in this room tonight at the twenty twenty two Sherrett. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a quick question. I noticed that there's a lady in the audience from the Let's Move Palm Beach County Month.
Oh.
Sitting in the back, and they're in consent.
Yes.
Can we possibly pause and move that up to do their proclamation? Do you have a motion to do that?
Motion to move the, um, Let's Move proclamation out of consent to presentations.
Okay. I'm sorry, I just saw that. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, so we're moving.
So it's item happen. Here you go, Mayor.
Wait, I'm sorry. So are we gonna jump ahead to this and pause the public participation?
Well, yes, we're just gonna pull this for the minute and do the proclamation, so this young lady does not have to sit around.
I apologize, nobody contacted me this year. They normally do.
Just, it's fine.
I just noticed, because I saw her shirt in the audience, I knew the will must have sent her.
Yeah.
I apologize if we didn't notice earlier. Okay, I'm sorry about that. Hi.
Hi.
I'm gonna read the proclamation, then you can introduce yourself and say a few words.
Okay.
Okay. Proclamation. Whereas, the city of Lake Worth Beach takes special notice and acknowledges exceptional organizations that help residents who live, work, and play within the jurisdiction. And whereas, in twenty ten, Digital Vibes was founded to reach out to underserved youth in Palm Beach County by empowering them through dance, fitness, technology, and the arts. And whereas, Digital Vibes partners with the Palm Health Foundation annually to host the Let's Move Commit to Change Physical Activity Challenge, a countywide initiative that focuses on physical activity, nutrition, and healthy behaviors. And whereas, Digital Vibes and Palm Health Foundation present the annual challenge, which takes place annually from March first to thirty first, and encourages individuals within and beyond Palm Beach County to take charge of their health by participating in the fitness exercises. And whereas, the Let's Move initiative was originally introduced on a national level by First Lady Michelle Obama in twenty ten, with the goal of decreasing childhood obesity throughout the United States, due to the fact that nearly one in three children in the United States are overweight or obese. And if this problem persists, one third of all children born in two thousand or later will suffer from diabetes at some point in their lives, or will face other obesity-related health problems such as heart disease, high blood pressure, asthma, and cancer. And whereas, Digital Vibes and Palm Health Foundation invite all residents to take the challenge to move by forming teams, registering online, committing to exercising for at least thirty minutes a day through the month of March, and logging their minutes on the Let's Move website. It's www.letsmovpbc.org. www.letsmovpbc.org. In, in twenty twelve, Palm Beach County logged one hundred thousand minutes in the first year of the challenge, and we have met that challenge each year since, rising in twenty twenty three to over a hundred million minutes logged. Now, therefore, I, Betty Rash, Mayor of the City of Lake Worth Beach, Florida, by virtue of the authority vested in me, and on behalf of the Commission, do hereby proclaim March twenty twenty five as Let's Move Palm Beach County Month, and urge all citizens to join us in moving to improve their fitness, mental health, and overall health. And I have witnessed, I have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Lake Worth Beach to be fixed this fourth day of March twenty twenty five. I read this, and I feel like, oh, God, I should do this.
You should.
I should. Um, Ms. Light, you're live, though. Yes, oh, no, that was just, oh, okay, trying to catch it. So why don't you introduce yourself and give us a little idea of how we get involved and what this is about?
Okay, my name is Andrea Stewart-Bruton. I am a member of the Let's Move Committee. Um, I have been a member of that committee since two thousand seventeen, and as she's, as your mayor stated, in two thousand thirteen, I think we logged, we logged a hundred thousand minute, and currently, last year, we logged, we logged over a hundred and sixty-two million minute. And the purpose of Let's Move is to get everybody in Palm Beach County moving and healthy. It is a countywide competition. So you have the city of Delray, you have the city of Boynton, you have Lake Worth, Wellington, West Palm, and all of the cities in Palm Beach County who are competing against each other. So anytime you do any type of physical activity for thirty minutes or more, you go on to letsmovpbc.org and log your minutes, and the city with the most minutes at the end of March wins the competition. Okay, and I'm currently, I'm from Delray.
Uh-oh.
Yes, Delray proud.
It's okay.
Yeah, yes. However, um, Let's Move is about everybody in Palm Beach County. So Lake Worth, we're encouraging, encouraging you to get moving and get healthy in our county.
Okay.
Thank you.
Some of us need.
Yeah.
More than others.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Um, we're, we're running the proclamation up to you right now. So we printed out a really nice one.
Thank you so much.
Wait one minute, Wanda's bringing it up. I already started.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And there it is.
She's gonna move.
Well, I'll just sit here. Oh. Oh, now you're, now you're not gonna go down?
Do you want to get a picture?
Thank you, Mayor.
Would you like a picture? Let's see those pictures.
Seems like it needs to be a movie, because we need to be moving.
All right, go Lake Worth Beach. One, two, three. Perfect, thank you. Yeah, there you go. I don't think it counts if you get paid. All right, so, back to public participation, and we were at, I believe, Catherine Colmeyer. Yes.
Uh, is this working? Yes. My name is Catherine Colmeyer, five oh three First Avenue South. I did some research on W Moda, looked at all their tax returns from two thousand twelve till two thousand twenty-three. No line item noting admissions as revenue was on any tax return until two thousand seventeen. I don't know why that was. I haven't had a chance to make any public information requests yet. In two thousand seventeen, the revenue from admissions was, two thousand seventeen, two thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Two thousand eighteen, thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Two thousand nineteen, seventy-one thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. Please note, these are pre-pandemic figures. The museum opened in two thousand fourteen. Um, I believe before it reopened in twenty twenty-five, the admission was ten dollars and eight dollars for seniors. Make the sum easy. After being open in their sixth year, the number of visitors was, to be generous, maybe eight thousand. Now, that's facts. I think it deserves questioning about how you then project to admissions of fifty thousand. I don't have anything personally against this museum. I only care that the Commission, every single person on this Commission, does an honest job of trying to do an analysis of what this will mean for the city. That's what I want from you, every single one of you, and I have not seen it yet. I have been dismissed as someone who would never be happy if I don't love this world-class museum. I don't see an attitude of honest analysis and requesting independent analysis, and I want to see it, because you have a responsibility to the taxpayers, and you're giving away a lot of money. So please, take this seriously. I am not an anti-development person. I just want to see the city take a responsible stance. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Jill Carlin. Followed by Wes Blackman.
Jill Carlin, two three eight one Sunset Avenue. And I did submit a card, Melissa, so I didn't know if it got in in time, so I ran over here. I was actually gonna bring a painting I did of the property and started it two thousand in nineteen eighteen. Um, and it shows the buildings that were torn down. Um, I want to echo the two people that spoke before me, because I'm speaking extemporaneously, but I also want to say that it seems quite irresponsible that our Old Town, that's the name of the historic district where the W Moda that you propose, and that is the shining gem for you all, is going to, we want to place, would destroy the character of Old Town. A parking garage in particular would destroy the character of Old Town. I love our city, and what I really love about our city is the small scale, scale of two-story buildings, of buildings that are within alignment of a twentieth-century, mid-century, modern kind of feeling. And I feel it's very important that we preserve that, that we preserve the adorable character of our town, and also that we're fiscally responsible to our community. And that does not involve giving away twenty million dollars to a man from New York who's never had any care for our city, and who manages over two billion dollars worth of property in New York, and was written about in the New York Times as a slumlord. I think it's very irresponsible to give away property to this human being. I think there are many artists in our town. I visited Rosemary Otto, who's in a nursing home now. She was eight years old when she moved here. She's an amazing artist. Why are we not heralding and commending these amazing artists who live in our town, and instead bringing the basement works from people like other people that aren't, have no connection with our town whatsoever? Rosemary's in a nursing home. She would love to be home. She's not. She's an incredible artist. Her mother was the art teacher at Lake Worth High School. And Rosemary's art should be heralded in our town, and there are others like Rosemary, whose art should be heralded in our town, instead of giving away our property to someone who doesn't care about our town. And whenever we do this, we continue to do this, we give away our very valuable resources for almost nothing in request for return. And I think that it's irresponsible for our CRA to, whose charge is to preserve our historic buildings and to care about our community, to evict people and leave our buildings vacant and derelict as they have done.
Thank you, that's time.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you. Wes Blackman, followed by Wade Hitchcock.
Have to see. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. Wes Blackman, two forty-one Columbia Drive. I am a certified urban planner with forty years of experience in the public and private sectors. I have lived in Lake Worth Beach since nineteen ninety-two and was the former chair of the Planning and Zoning and Historic Resource Preservation Boards. I'm here to express my strong support for the W Moda project, which promises to benefit Lake Worth Beach significantly. This project is poised to deliver jobs, investment, and long-term stability to our community. It will be accomplished through the creative abilities of the city, the CRA, and W Moda principles. First, W Moda is not seeking TIF money and will repay the land cost in under ten years. A better deal than most cities receive in public-private partnerships. Unlike past inaction stretching over years, this project will stimulate downtown improvement and promote meaningful change. The economic boost to local businesses, increased property values, and housing stock are key factors that cannot be ignored. The project also brings job creation during and after construction. Concerns about the K Street Garage stem from misinformation. The agreement guarantees that the city will not enter long-term leases restricting public and W Moda patron access to parking spaces. Additionally, W Moda will satisfy parking requirements on the L and M site according to the code, with extra leases available at the city's discretion. The museum will serve as a destination use in the downtown area, contributing to increased revenues and tourism for businesses. Further, as many can attest, our downtown currently lacks convenient parking and has for some time. This project signifies progress by providing affordable artist lots and community classes for local and aspiring artists. Instead of relying on nonexistent state and federal grant funds, we should seize this opportunity for growth and prosperity. We can say yes in my backyard, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Wade Hitchcock. Followed by Todd Velez.
Good evening. My name is Wade Hitchcock, fifteen oh six Thirteenth Avenue North. My question to you guys are, yes.
Yeah, there you go.
My question to you, if you're gonna put signs up at the beach that says, no littering, no bikes, no scooters and all this, who's enforcing that? Because what I saw over the weekend, with spring brickers starting to come in, it's busy up there. They're all popping wheelies on their bikes, running their scooters full blast down the sidewalk. So who's gonna get hit, and who's gonna pay the bill for these people that get hurt? And the beach, I'm there every two days cleaning your beach.
I, I was not gonna say anything, but Mr. Hitchcock, I saw you the other day.
I saw you.
At Killens, and the, and the owner of Killens told me who you are and what you do, and thank you very much.
I have, I have dragged off.
On his own all the time.
I have dragged boards with nails in it.
Yeah.
Half a dock that has floated up. But the guys that work from the rail to the road, they're always there helping me. They're great guys, and they need to be known that they're a big part of that beach, because that's your gem. Everything else you got in this city is garbage.
Well, I wouldn't be with that, but that's a.
Well, nobody wants to go downtown. There's nothing here for the kids to even do anything, if you're from out of town. You don't need to look into that.
Thank you. Todd Velez, followed by Joanne Burko.
Todd Velez, five thirty North G. The lead and deal are the same letter configurations. You can't lead somewhere where you ain't going. As a side note, Miss Otto's artwork is in the first presby and enjoyed. Hopefully, it will stay in Lake Worth and not be janitorized or end up in a yard sale. Blighted Alleyways grants with the CRA, the fourteen-hundred block of Lucerne and Second Avenue North between C and D North Street. Hopefully, a model concept can develop there if they consider us. Um, West Palm Beach had the miracle on Thirty Fourth Street under Nancy Graham, and maybe this is something that can happen with the alleys. Um, Valley Parking Lot consideration, first presby, very interested, but they did take a big hit with the promenade building, one hundred block, when they were unsolicited, the church. Um, they didn't follow through with their contract arrangement with the city in order to make the, um, um, improvements, and the church no longer received the three thousand plus. So there are learning curve there. And also, uh, they did take a, a twenty thousand dollar hit on air conditioning that never was done, which would have been with Roger Marmon, and, um, so they are wary, is my point. And, um, that air conditioning cost them nearly a hundred thousand with, um, but cheap, cutting back on rent and having to do rent air conditioning and have to do, uh, uh, improvements and, uh, do the air conditioning twice. Um, Pocket Park redo, let, uh, should be a big lesson with Royal Montana Park. Um, plus you have, um, at Sixth Avenue, uh, excuse me, Sixth Streets, uh, number six, South B Street, they have a whorehouse, and, uh, that was near that park. Um, with the Pocket Park at, um, at Tropical Ridge, um, park, they have, as one neighbor says, a whore in a box, but it's right across the street from the police station. So there's things to be learned and to keep an eye on. Um, the prophetic words from a informant, which, uh, was Roman Mitchell, for Captain Vera, which he realized, your days here in Lake Worth are numbered. We're seeing improvements with our new police captain. Thank you very much. Uh, an ad was Cavalry Methodist Church, the doors are being changed in the older building, and we'd like, uh, that, which is now the Korean Church of God, World Missions, as they change out those historic doors, that maybe they will go to, um, uh, our Savior with the Sherman Child Chapel. They'd like to re-size those doors. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne Burko, followed by Tom, Todd Townsend. Good evening, Joanne.
Hello, everyone. Um, I didn't prepare anything to say, so this is off the cuff.
I'm sorry, name and address for the record, please.
Just have to give your address.
Hmm.
Just have to give your address.
Oh, eleven oh five Second Avenue South. Um, one of the main reasons that I decided to create Ben Ziden was because I, as an artist, a local artist, um, had to go over to Sarasota every time I cast something in bronze. And I thought to myself, there's something very wrong about this picture. There were so many great fabrication places over on the west coast of Florida, but none that were really open to artists on this side. So that is one of the premier reasons that I started Ben Ziden. Since I have started Ben Ziden, artists from all over, uh, one came from California practically the first year we were open to start renting space so that he could create his beautiful hand-blown creations. He is now a Florida artist. Okay, he was, uh, collected by Mr. Weiner. I think he started collecting Josh Freitas's work, a local artist, about two years ago, along with Rob Stern, who is on my board, who is also a Florida artist. Um, you, there have been comments made that this is a man's collection, one man's collection. Well, I just want to say that it was one woman's collection that started one of the most magnificent museums over in St. Pete, uh, the Imagine Museum. And I urge all of you in this room and whoever is listening to look up the Imagine Museum in St. Pete. This could be our Imagine Museum. This could be a boon for this community, and it would go along with what I've always heard that we stand for, which is a place where art is made.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Up next, Todd Townsend. Followed by, followed by Alex Schultz.
Hi, Todd Townsend, five oh two South J Street. Last night, I was at the Downtown Jewel meeting with, uh, Downtown there, and John Fost and Todd Ketchum said that Lake and John Fost and Todd Ketchum said that Lake Worth Beach would one year be in default, and that West Palm would be taking over our city. They said that building a museum and 110 apartment unit building would help save our autonomy. We stakeholders would like a presentation on the matter. And so I have three questions. Might the town of Palm Beach be waiting for such? Then it would be easy for them to take control over our beach. Might the Jack Nicholas Group be waiting to purchase our beach so that we could alleviate this, this deficit situation under the same notion? Might this be the reason that you are learning how to handle the unsolicited proposals concerning our beach when the public says no hotel on the beach? Stakeholders should have the information so as to be able to make arrangements or not. John and Todd are pretty smart people. Why haven't we heard you speaking about this? It sounds really serious. I've written a plan that puts us on the, on the map of tourism in a really good way. I've done a lot of work on it, yet I've been blocked by you and staff. I'm like, let's make our tourist trap. You're like, no, let's just be open and sell off our cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Schultz.
Good evening. Alex Schultz, 612 Second Avenue South. I'm not here of my own choice, okay? When people start complaining about the K Street Garage, I told them, I'm probably gonna be out of here in two years. I'd like to be in a single-family home and behind the gate. And one of the neighbors said, I can no longer afford to move to Vero. And other neighbors have approached me and asked me, you know, what am I gonna do? Well, what I wanna do is I wanna move the heck out of here. But, so if you see me here, I'm not here for myself. This is the last thing I wanna do. I'm here for the neighbors. The poor neighbors whose parents fought in World War II, who are now in their mid-70s. They are the aged children of World War II veterans that is, that the federal government, the state government, and the local government has weaponized against them. You're putting a garage on K Street, they love to walk that street. It's, and even Weiner says, we need to preserve the historic and residential character of the neighborhood. An above-ground parking structure will detract from the architectural and historical value of the area. That's on his website. Loves, he loves Lake Worth Beach. And moving on, the parking study, the 2024 parking study, that's false. It's, it's based on false information. I've been sending you emails. I have, everybody should request the city clerk to send them my February 27th, 2025 email at 9:29 PM with 11 attachments. That explains in detail why this, that study is wrong. And let's just look at it. There was a 2018 study, parking study by WGI. WGI is a good firm. They independently performed that study, and then in that study, they said they're, we're gonna get 147,000 a year in parking revenue from a downtown garage. And yet, for the 2024 study, the staff took over and controlled that study and fed the information and data to WGI. And that 147,000 went to $1,010,000 a year. You can't move from 147 to over $1 million unless the figures are fabricated. I've been doing walkarounds every Saturday and sometimes on Sunday in the evening. We have never been full once in the downtown area. It's basically a fraud. It's a fraud on the public, the 2024 parking study. And to push it forward is a fraud being committed by the city on the public. And talking about the Imagine Museum, I sent you an email, I believe, on Imagine. That's an example of where she went. The woman there, she went and I think she bought the land, she put the museum in. I don't think she begged any money from the city. Take, that's the example. Take a look at her. Imagine is a good reason why, the example we need to follow here.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you, sir. Charles Contessa. Followed by Pam Triola.
Charles Contessa, 428 North K Street. This project will generate direct jobs in construction, skilled trades, and professional services during the development phase. Once it's completed, it could lead to long-term employment opportunities in operations, maintenance, and related sectors. Local businesses could benefit from contracting opportunities boosting small business growth. More workers and visitors mean higher demand for restaurants, retail, and hospitality. Increased consumer spending could strengthen existing businesses and attract new investments. Large-scale projects often increase property values, benefiting homeowners and the city's tax base. Additional tax revenue could help fund public services, infrastructure, and community programs without raising tax rates. The project could lead to improvements in local infrastructure, roads, utilities, and public spaces. There's a potential for community partnerships that could enhance education, training, and cultural initiatives. High-profile projects often serve as a catalyst for further development, attracting investors and businesses to the area. It could position Lake Worth as a hub for innovation, tourism, and other art projects. Thank you.
Pam Triola, followed by Greg Richter.
Pam Triolo, Clayne, North Ocean Breeze, Lake Worth Beach. It's so sad to hear and to see what's going on in reference to this Womota project because you think about the city of Lake Worth Beach, I used to always say, you know, other cities and towns have to create arts districts. We have it here naturally. It's born here. It's been here. It's not going anywhere. You know, the arts, this is where, as was mentioned, this is where the arts are made. This is where they're created. To welcome an arts project like this and to go after this man and his business plan and whatever, it's vilifying a gentleman that's coming here to try to do something when there will be so many chances to critique the plan and critique the buildings and massage what you have to do. But you don't wanna discourage someone from coming here and doing something beautiful like the Ben Ziden. When that came here, you know, people were like, well, what's gonna happen there? And they're gonna take the land and whatever. We had created that industrial artisanal district in that area. And, and look what she's done. I mean, boy, I wish she was writing downtown too. She is just magnificent. This is a chance for us to shine. And when we tear it apart like this, and the, once again, the red sign brigade comes out. This time the signs aren't red. I must say they're white signs with red letters this time. But they're out again saying anti-Womota, you know, against Womota. Come on, guys. You know, let's save our beach, save our Gulf Stream, save our things from Womota and the big bad Weiner guy who's coming to put the museum in. I mean, really? Let's be normal here. I know it's election time, but let's be normal people. Let this man come in, let him show you. Yes, you're gonna have your say. Millions of people are gonna come out and whatever, but let's not be nasty about it. This is a beautiful project for the city, and if it works, and if it works with everything that you guys have deemed the rules, then it happens. Don't poo poo it and piss everybody off in the meantime, when it hasn't even gotten to the point where it's even gonna be built yet. That's what causes controversy, and that's what makes us look bad in the middle of the arts community because they're watching us, and we want more arts projects to come here. We wanna be the center of that for good reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Richter, followed by Peggy Fisher.
Good evening. Greg Richter, 1202 South Palmway. I'm gonna repeat something I've said here many times before. I'm in favor of the W Moda. I think it's, this will be a culture and residential hub in our downtown. I really like what it brings to our city. You know, one of the things I looked at, you know, people talk about, oh, it's just this guy's private collection. Do you know how many museums in this country started out as that guy's collection, including our own Norton Museum? So let's, let's kind of move on from there. You gotta start somewhere. Secondly, you know, we're talking about the, you know, vernacular of, of design here. One thing that was left out in that comment, Art Deco. I mean, we are the, we have the largest collection of Art Deco buildings in Palm Beach County. So I just, and I love the residential component because it's apartments, it's primary residents, they live downtown. And if you don't like the parking that, and the fact that the guy's gonna spend the money to suppress the parking so the building doesn't, you know, go higher, that's a lot of money to be able to, that he's spending to do that, to accommodate and make it not invasive to the neighbors around him. But the, the other thing is, is there enough parking there? Well, you know, you guys are gonna have to look at it yourself because two of you and a third person voted to change the parking about, you know, one of our housekeeping meetings one night. And I was the only one up here that spoke about it, and look at the mess we got up at Deco Green up there on, on, on Federal Highway, our Dixie Highway. So I think, you know, it's a good project. I think it's good for our downtown. The Chahuli thing is fantastic. And the other thing is, by the way, I don't know if you noted, you know, they keep talking about museum attendance is down. Well, the Norton just set a record for January, February is the two largest months they've ever had. They had 66,000 visitors in January and February this year. So as I said at the CRA, go back and look at your facts. The museum attendance is climbing because it did plummet COVID. So thanks for everything you guys are doing. Keep working on it.
Thank you. Peggy Fisher. And then Deborah Roberts.
Peggy Fisher, North A Street. Changing the subject a little bit, I would like to see brought forth when the no smoking signs in our parks are going to be put up. This came up when the prior leisure services director was here, and I've been told every time I've asked, oh, they're working on it. Well, I just had signs made in a week, so I don't know what they're working on, but maybe they're making the material to put the signs on. Who knows? I would also like to know the status of the Annex Building, which has been supposedly had an assessment done. Where is it? How much is it gonna cost to renovate? What's the status? We have all these projects that are hanging out there that are in the budget that we don't have any updates on. So switching back to the topic that came up or brought, was brought forth about Womota. I support Womota 100%, and it's a shame that the leader of the anti-version and all the misleading facts from the 19, wait, it went up a million while we're in this meeting, the 20 million cost of this project, which isn't accurate. Nothing was mentioned about the $65 million that is going to bring into this city and invest in this city. But we can't say that. We have to attack personally some facts from 15 years ago and attack an individual man and his collection, which is fabulous, and you only see part of it if you go down or take the time to go down, not at the last minute, to see the museum. I totally support everything Wes Blackman had to say about it. He is absolutely right. And I totally support the lady from Ben Ziden who said, why, why, why can't we support something like this and bring it to our city? We have to be willing to improve our city, move our city forward, or our city is not gonna be here. Look at all the old-time cities in the state of Florida, and most of them are in the middle of the state with a couple thousand people in them and very little improvements. And we're what, a mile from the beach? And this bit about throwing out this unsolicited proposal and implying, making any implication to the public that you all have discussed it, which is untrue, that it's been talked about in one of these meetings, which is untrue, to imply to the public that it is something that's going to be done is a disservice, and is not really what I would want anyone sitting on this dais to be doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Deborah Roberts, and I believe that's it.
Good evening. Deborah, 127 South K. Of course, I want to express my utmost support in seeing Womota project through. I believe in our city and staff and the CRA, and I recognize the hard work they continue to put in, and I thank you all for staying the course. Those are for those who are for the continuation, pursuing Womota's existence, or finding negative feedback describing giveaways to a rich developer and that we're kowtowing to some old man's personal collection. Well, Dale Chahuli does not attach his name or work to someone's personal collection. The fact that he's committed to putting in an installation should tell you this is, that this is something profound, especially when you consider that that World Heritage Institutions pay millions just for temporary installations, including Historic Biltmore and Fairchild, just for instance. We know that nothing in this partnership is being given away, and repayment happens over time, while at the same time we benefit from improvements to the welfare economy and reputation of our city. The argument over the estimated 50,000 in attendance, I can understand that, but I feel the numbers are fair. The more in St. Pete, it's a minimum of 90,000 visitors a year. The Oklahoma City started, City Museum start with just a few Chahuli pieces. The interest is so insanely great that they had 500 cities and donations in a large campaign to purchase a comprehensive collection. They never look back, and to this day they get over 100,000 visitors a year. Mr. Weiner's collection isn't the museum. It's the base to what will become an ever-expanding curated series of collections for all different types. And I'm most excited about the potential of collaborating with our local artists and galleries, and we can also curate exhibitions from some of the impactful major minor galleries in Miami and Wynwood, for instance, and beyond, exposing our youth to up-and-coming and established artists with culturally relevant significance. Rotating musicians and live offerings like the Norton will keep things fresh for repeat visits. And incidentally, we as a county have become a major stop, a major one, for serious collectors, gallerists, and our enthusiasts for every, of every kind during our Basel, also our Palm Beach, et cetera. Womota will have draw through this portal, and being downtown and paired with the Ben Ziden ensures our city will be advertised annually to a very broad audience. Every hotel in the area, from the Breakers to the Gulf Stream, the Holiday Ends, all over the county, will advertise Womota. Visit Florida and the Cultural Council will advertise, not to mention collaborate with Womota Tourism. None of this is blowing smoke, pun intended pretty much, because looking at the bigger picture art scene and how hot glass is and how hot glass is right now and how rare it is to get to see it, I truly believe, as many in the industry do, enough numbers will be there to help keep our downtown rich and vibrant. Thank you so much.
Thank you. She did. She's beat red.
I would like to request special permission to read a comment that was not able, somebody was not able to be here. Doesn't relate to anything that's been talked about so far, but it is important to our city.
But it's, that's not the rule, though.
I, I understand. That's why I'm requesting special permission because it's something that is quite relevant to our city, and it was not possible for the person to be here.
So I, I, tell me, tell me, folks, what you want me to do.
I don't, I don't think that's a good idea. I don't wanna set that kind of precedent, just for one, because everybody can put it online and everybody can read it, so this person can too.
And I'm every.
We had, if I might mention, we had some very significant events happen in our community in the last week that affect a lot of people in this community. It would be appropriate to hear a comment about it, and you can send a message of how you feel about human rights.
And folks, please. I made a commitment, excuse me, Mr. McQuaid. I have, I made a commitment, and I do read it. Before I come to this meeting, I read every letter that is sent to, whether it's gonna be read by the, by the clerk for a specific agenda item or not. So I do keep that promise to read everything, and I will be happy to read whatever this person submits. So moving right along, I need approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion to, sorry, go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Great. Unfinished business, fiscal year 2025, 26, Community Development Block Grant Application. So here we are tonight. And we're gonna have staff take over.
Alfonso's on his way to pull up the presentation.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
Bada Mayor, members of the commission, I'm Karen Kelly, grants analyst. Here again to talk about Community Development Block Grant Program. The Community Development Block Grant Program, or CDB. The Community Development Block Grant Program, or CDBG, resulted from the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy four. It was enacted in nineteen seventy five with the purpose of providing communities with natural resources to address unique community development needs. It's administered by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. And HUD awards grants based on formula allocations to entitlement communities to carry out a wide range of community development activities directed toward revitalizing neighborhoods, economic development, providing improved community facilities and services. Entitlement communities include states, states, urban counties that have a population of two hundred thousand or more, and municipalities with a population of fifty thousand or more. Palm Beach County is an eligible entitlement urban county for the receipt of CDBG funding. The Palm Beach County entitlement jurisdiction serves both unincorporated areas and non-entitlement communities, which are those populations of less than fifty thousand. And this includes the city of Lake Worth, as well as Bell Glade, Green Acres, Lake Park, Lantana, Mangonia Park, Palm Springs, Pahokee, Riviera Beach and South Bay. The city of Lake Worth, the city of Lake Worth Beach is entered into an inter, interlocal cooperation, cooperation agreement as amended with Palm Beach County participation in its urban county program, which lasts through September thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. By this action, the city of Lake Worth Beach is eligible for receipt of this portion of the formula allocation of CDB funds, CDBG funds the county receives from HUD. All right. In accordance with the interlokal, interlocal cooperation agreement, the city must use its allocation of CDBG funding for certain eligible activities pursuant to CDBG regulations. Eligible uses, eligible uses for sub recipients under the Palm Beach Urban County partnership include eligible infrastructure and public facility improvements such as roadway and sidewalk improvements, parks and recreational facilities, community centers and public facilities, and code enforcement within an existing CDBG target area. The county's CDBG program does not permit other eligible uses of CDBG funds such as public services. It issues RFP for nonprofit organizations countywide, planning and administration activities, which go to the Department of Housing and Economic Development with the county. And in addition, the county conducts its own countywide housing rehab program and economic development programs using CDBG and other funding. All eligible activities must meet the national objective of the CDBG program of benefiting low and moderate income persons pursuant to twenty four Code of Federal Regulations five seventy point two zero eight A. It's estimated that the twenty five, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six CDBG funding for the city will be a formula allocation of three hundred one thousand five hundred eighty six dollars, which is the current allocation the city receives for CDBG. HUD will typically update these actual allocations in April of a given year. This year, we're eligible for a special area of hope allocation in the estimated amount of three hundred fifty thousand, six hundred fifty dollars. And this is a special allocation that the county makes available to its, its partners in the, its urban program. And it rotates every year among the different members. The city can submit one application for each allocation or can send, submit an, an allocation for the combined amount. The choice is yours. This is the CDBG target area of the city of West, of Lake Worth Beach. The northern boundary is Tenth Avenue North. It's bounded by Dixie Highway on the east, the town of Lantana to the south, I ninety five on the west. And it expands to include the Park of Commerce north of Second Avenue North. We discussed at the last meeting, two weeks ago, different projects that staff has recommended. The first project is eleventh and Ninth Avenue South Greenway Improvements. The scope of work includes, but is not limited to update and improve irrigation systems, provide additional landscaping, added amenities such as benches, doggy stations, garbage receptacles and static fitness equipment. Information to the community outreach stations and art installations. It's estimated that the scope of work can be funded in full by the CDBG allocation. The second proposed project was the Tropical Ridge Fitness Park improvements. The scope of work includes, but is not limited to removal of the concrete foundation and installation of a mulch base for replaced equipment. And all the damaged equipment, fitness equipment will be replaced. There'll be the installation of a new playground and ADA sidewalks and landscaping. Again, the CBG allocation is expected to cover the entire cost. The third proposed project is the Norman J. Wimbley Gym Improvements Project. The scope of work includes, but is not limited to updating the signage and the marquee, updating the HVAC, HVAC system, improving the restroom facilities, upgrades to the front entrance, including lighting and updating athletic equipment. Again, the proposed scope of work will be covered in full by the CDBG allocation the city receives. The fourth project is improvements to the Osborne Center Campus. And the scope of work includes, but is not limited to the roof replacement of the Osborne Community Center, re-sodding of the athletic fields at Howard Park and any additional improvements needed to the Youth Empowerment Learning Center. Again, the special, special area of hope allocation would cover the entire costs of these proposed improvements.
Would the, would the area of hope be eligible for any of those four? It doesn't matter which ones we, where the money comes from.
I'm sorry, didn't hear you.
The, the area of hope, and you just answered, we can use the area of hope money for any one of those four projects.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
This is.
We're allowed to select two projects if that's your desire.
Right. Thank you. And I know that we did have a poll survey.
How'd that turn out?
That is correct. Jerry, you have the results. I can read them all if I didn't know.
Rebecca Seelig, our POI, conducted a survey that ran twelve days, ending yesterday. And the projects in order, improvements to the Osborne Community Center Campus received a hundred sixty eight votes. Improvements to the two greenways received a hundred thirty eight votes. The Tropical Ridge Fitness Park received a hundred thirty, a hundred thirty six votes. And the Norman Wimbley Gym received a hundred thirty five votes. So it's very close.
Yes. Thank you.
Other projects that were suggested included basically capital improvements that would be eligible within the CDBG target area. And actually included improving public facilities like the Osborne Community Center.
Okay, makes sense.
So.
Okay. So Mr. McBoy, you had your light on first.
Yeah, on. I guess what I'm thinking here is we have, we're, this is an unusual year that we have two chunks of about three hundred thousand, one actually a little bit bigger.
It happens every ten years.
Happens every ten years. All right. So that's unusual. And we have two proposals in District One in the Wingfield area that are up for potential use of both sets of funds. We also have a proposal in the Tropical Ridge area in District Three, I believe.
District One, two?
Yeah. But it shouldn't be there.
So, and here's, here's kind of what I'm thinking that the, looking at the image kind of helped me think about it. The one of the Wimbley Gym said, improve the HVAC. And I'm thinking, well, that's an indoor space. And yes, it's nice to improve the HVAC, but the Tropical Ridge one is an outdoor space. It, it doesn't even have a building. And in terms of, of thinking about it, to me, it seems like the Tropical Ridge one needs a little bit of love. I would use the smaller of the two grants, the three hundred odd one, and put the three fifty one down in the Wingfield community. And I, I'm neutral on which building one wants to do it. But I would argue that the area that's still an outdoor area has no HVAC at all or no roof at all, but could use some improvement. That doesn't seem like an unreasonable thing. It is definitely an area that gets used a lot. There's no question that it does. I'm sure the, both the Osborne Center and the Wingfield also get used a lot, but people are not as aware of the usage of Tropical Ridge. So my vote would be three hundred for the Tropical Ridge and three fifty at other people's discretion between the two groups.
Thank you. I think this Malaga or was next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I've done some research and of all these projects, the only one that could qualify for the FERDAP grant process is the Tropical Ridge Park. None of these other projects could. And that's because of maintenance. And I think Tiana could come explain it better than I can. But the FERDAP grant process allows us to replace playground equipment and park equipment. You cannot do maintenance with it. So I was the one who brought forward the Tropical Ridge and asked staff to put it in and I'm thankful for it. I think that it does need to be done, but I think that we need to go after the FERDAP grant with that being the only thing that it can do. It can't be used for the gymnasium. It cannot be used for the Osborne Community Center and try to get all three done by using the CDBG on the Osborne roof because that's an imperative. The kids use the gymnasium all the time. The gym is packed. And if we can go after the FERDAP grant for Tropical Ridge, I think that's a win, win, win. That's, that's where my head is. I don't know if everybody knows what the FERDAP grant is or the process, but maybe Mr. Kelly can.
FERDAP is intended for the development of outdoor recreational activities. So the fitness gym would be a good fit for the Tropical Ridge Fitness Park.
Let me ask you some questions, though, about that. I mean, how realistic is it to think that that would be some, you know, is it realistic? How often are the applications open? How much is available?
There is an annual application cycle that's typically conducted September through October, the middle part of those two months. And you can apply from fifty thousand dollars to two hundred thousand dollars. With fifty thousand dollars, there's no match required. For two hundred thousand dollars, it's a dollar for dollar.
Ms. May? Are you done?
Thank you for that alternate thought. I'm looking at the FERDAP and the twenty five, twenty six FERDAP application cycle has closed. So if we did that, it wouldn't even come into play until twenty seven. And I went to the Tropical Ridge Fitness Park last night. We can't wait that long. People, somebody's going to get hurt. The, the equipment, the, the actual workout equipment, quote unquote, somebody said last night at the Tropical Ridge meeting, I sit down and my butt's on screws. So that's not really appropriate. So I, I appreciate looking at that. I just don't think that it's timely. I don't think we, it would make sense to wait that long when we can do this now. Plus then we have to match the grant, the money, which is always a difficult ask. I, so when I went in there last time, last time we were talking about this, I was really concerned about the upkeep of it. And you know, when I went in last night, first of all, Mr. McBoy's right, there were tons of people in there working out, playing, just chilling. And it was, you know, completely peaceful situation. There are three, like gardens, I know, I know. But, and we talked about that and, you know, we would want to, when we redid this, if we chose this, you know, we could make it so that it wouldn't be anything that would enhance, that would be extra maintenance for staff, like gardens, you know, community gardens are beautiful, but people say they're going to, you know, do something with them and then they never do. So, you know, with the landscaping, you can put in the native stuff. You can put in anything that, you know, it doesn't need a lot of water. There is, I talked to Jamie today, there is opportunity for electricity. There is opportunity for water because it's near electric lights and water mains. So there's a lot of things that could be done. The trees in there are absolutely gorgeous, you know, and it does need some love. And so I would definitely vote for the Tropical Ridge Fitness Park for the three hundred thousand. And then the gym or the roof on the Osborne Center. I, I mean, I, I kind of like Mr. McBoy said, whatever the greatest need is, and then we can do the other one next year. So I don't want the kids to have to play in the gym with no AC, though. That's not going to die, is it?
But if the roof gets ripped off at a third category three hurricane and all the damage gets done to, I mean, the roof from Mr. McBoy's.
We're not allowed to say that word.
So, okay. And so you got, we can discuss the other one, but I really think that, you know, we're going to hear some comments probably from some community members. And I think that it's time to do something outside of District One. And not that District One doesn't deserve all of this. I wish, I wish every district could get money, but I think for now that Tropical Ridge Park really needs some love. So that would be my number one. And then my number two would be either three or four.
Okay. Mr. Dance, do you have any input into this?
I do. Thank you for that update. I mean, you know, I've, I've driven by that park so, so often and it is well loved. It seems like I always hear quite a bit of complaints about like not so great things happening. Yeah. Hope you weren't taking pictures of like the playground. That's always, but yeah. So, you know, it's a well-loved park. I always hear complaints about it being abused and whatnot. And you hear that about all parks, honestly. That's just, you know, the nature of public areas in, in Florida and most of the world. But, you know, it's disappointing to hear the condition of the equipment, especially the playground. We often talk about when we do do playgrounds in other parts of the community that we need to invest in like shade and whatnot. Well, this comes pre-installed with shade. So I can see why it's incredibly popular, right? And so, thank you. That was helpful. You know, I guess the, really what the question remains is, and as Mr. Kelly, you know, gave us the bad news last time, that these are limited to the parcel number, right? So there can't be any combination. That's just really unfortunate. Because, you know, it's a toss up. I mean, honestly, I'm leaning more towards, and I'll, I'll wait to hear what maybe Mr. Brown has to say or anyone from staff or, you know, maybe Tiana, because I, right now I'm leaning towards the gym just because I, I hear about all the time the concerns about the AC and, and, you know, every summer gets increasingly hotter. That's when this gym is extra used, I feel like. And then I just like, you know, envisioning this nightmare scenario of that's when we're going to have a major HVAC issue. The, the other side of that is we did do like ninety percent of the work on the Osborne building. I'm not, you know, I think things like the re-sodding of the fields and the other part is, is something that could be held off. But the roof is, you know, I'm usually a fan of doing things a hundred percent. So if the roof can make it another year, I think, you know, that could be the one to hold off on or to come up with a financial plan to figure out how to pay for just that part of it.
Because we haven't gotten an estimate on the roof.
Right.
So we had the analysis done on multiple city facilities. The gym, we do, we can postpone for about another few years on the gym roof. Osborne roof has to be done. We're going to be in the low twos for the.
I'm sorry?
Low two hundred thousands for that.
For the roof of the Osborne Center?
Yeah. If it's not this, it'll be part of the upcoming CIP because we're going to have to do something. And it's just, it's, it's out of its useful life. And so we've kind of patched and done as much as we can and kind of drug it along as far as we can do it, but we're, we're at that.
What about the gym roof?
The gym roof, we have another few. The gym roof, we have another few years on.
What about the HVAC?
HVAC for the gym is gonna be another listing draft addressed during the CIP.
Whether or not we do this for the, basically, in other words, the roof is okay for another few years, but the HVAC is probably a different.
Correct. There are multiple things that can be, that need to be done at the gym other than the roof.
Yeah.
Gym gets so much use, so much use. Mr. McBoy, your light was off.
Uh, just one clarification question to make sure that we're all on the same page. There is no clever accounting way that we could do the roof of the Osborne and throw some money at the HVAC or maybe do something at at Osborne that frees up some other money that could then go to the HVAC. Are there any ways? Those seem to be the two critical things there, the roof of the Osborne and the HVAC on Wimbley.
Yeah. So you have, and Jerry, you can cover this, but you you have two pots of money and two projects you can do.
Yeah, the county ties it to parcel ID numbers.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. Now, what about the clever accounting thing?
Can't quit, claim them together?
Yeah, unity of William, unity of uh, there we go. Do it right, right. Okay. The the other thing I was gonna say, I just wanted to make sure that we understood the basis there. Difficult choice, as as Commissioner Giedt said. Um, the FERDAC idea is interesting, but the uh, recrea, the sports equipment and the exercise equipment that's at Bryant Park also needs quite a bit of attention. I have no idea what sort of budget. There might be people here who know that. Um, but it uh, it it needs attention there and that and maybe fifty thousand would do that. That would be one that I would think more a shot for on the FERDAC. Just my thought.
Ms. May? Or Ms. Malaga?
Um, no, I didn't.
I just turned it off. Um, hearing now about the roof, um, I still think we should do the gym. I think we should do the gym and the Tropical Ridge and then put the roof into our CIP because it'd be, is it cheaper to pay for the roof or it is for the whole gym? The roof, right? So let's pay for that out of our money and then let's use the grant money for the gym. That's what I'm thinking.
What I was gonna say.
Well, you know, great minds.
Teamwork. Now, are we will see.
Motion?
That's a motion. No, I want to hear all these people.
Um, will there be CD, CDGB funds again next year available?
We hope so.
I mean, I was gonna say, I mean, optimistically speaking, optimistically speaking.
I mean, if it's been going since I was born.
Mike in second, I know we can listen to Peter.
That's fine. Okay, so I want to make the.
Yeah, because uh, I was gonna say something extremely similar to that, but the other option that I was curious is, you know, if we have an idea of what the roof costs, about two hundred thousand, do we have an idea of what the HVAC on a gym costs? I can't imagine it being more or close to that.
It's not just HVAC.
Well, I know, but.
Yeah, we have multiple things in the gym. HVAC, we do not have a cost on that yet.
And HVAC.
Substantial.
And that can't be done without, I mean, it doesn't make too much sense to do the HVAC without doing the roof because the HVAC is up there, right?
You can do the HVAC without doing the roof on the gym. The roof, we're not concerned with the roof on the gym right now because we've got a couple more years out of that, so.
And so kind of relating to Commissioner May's point is the which would be a uh, easier blow to take in our CIP at HVAC of the gym or the the roof of the?
HVAC, sure. Would definitely be an easier blow on our CIP.
But just the.
Nothing else would get done in the.
Right, and that's.
And we have to, yeah, and we have to hope for a future grant for.
Yeah, I'd rather wait, I'd rather spend this in on the gym. So my motion is to do the Tropical Ridge Park with the three hundred and the three fifty to the gym.
Second.
Okay, public comment. Madam Clerk, do you have any public comment?
Bless you.
I do. I have about seven.
Well, uh, let's do the people here first because they're here. Pam Triola, Kane. C H. Hey Shaw next. Anthony Seagull by Carla Bloxton.
I just want to reiterate what I had done um, the last time. I don't know how much time everyone in this room spends in District One. Um,
Quite a bit, probably.
And no, but in this room, not not up on the dais and really knows the depth of of what is going on there and what hasn't gone on there in a long time. Um, they're still not up to date with, you know, I mean, a hundred years of being left behind means there's still infrastructure projects that need to be attended to. There's still no streets on some of the side streets and 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 up and down. I know Tropical Ridge still has a few too, but there's like a lot of them still on the south end of the town. The gym itself, you know, we had looked at a at a at a possibility of a public-private partnership to really, you know, update the Osborne Center and the gym and things of that nature, and it really does need that desperately um, over the the next decade or so, but I know that you just redid some of it. You gotta fix the stuff that's down there. You gotta figure out a way, like I said, whether you're doing it through the CIP or through whatever way you need to do it. And I feel bad for Tropical Ridge, but man, if that if that roof goes, you're gonna lose everything underneath it and then you're gonna be talking flooring and furnishings and everything, I mean, everything else on top of it. You're gonna lose hundreds of thousands of dollars and stuff. So it's supposed to be a pretty uh, rainy storm season this year. So, you know, keep that in mind when you're looking at that. But again, that section of the city has been ignored for a hundred years. And that's why I put every CDBG dollar into that district because it needed it. And it still does. So that's my hope.
Thank you, Amy Shaw.
Can I ask Jamie a quick question? Jamie, you know how there's an emergency truck on here for you guys to play with? I'm just kidding. Just kidding. Um, would it be prudent if we needed to make any emergency roof adjustment before that season that I'm not supposed to talk about, just to be safe? Could we do, maybe talk to Yannick about that for the finance part?
Yeah, and obviously on the uh, eighteenth, we do have a budget amendment coming forward, but yeah, there's always the ability to.
Okay, so we don't have to wait until, maybe we need to bring that on the eighteenth. Good idea. Thank you. Michelle?
Hi, my name is Amy Shaw and I live at one, two, three North F Street. And I brought some pictures of Tropical Ridge Fitness Park um, that Doreen Thomas took and I don't know if I made, I might not have made enough copies. I don't think I did, so share. So um, I'm here tonight representing the Tropical Ridge Neighborhood Association where I serve as Vice President. And in our neighborhood, we have a small park at two eleven North H Street, Tropical Ridge Fitness Park. Um, I'm not gonna go into when it opened since we've already done some discussions on it. Um, but you know, at first the park, which was um, uh, opened in two thousand twelve, at first it was a real asset to our community. A place where families could gather and neighbors could get some fresh air and exercise. But today it's a very different story. Um, the park has fallen into serious disrepair with broken equipment, cracked sidewalks and neglected raised bed gardens. These aren't just eyesores, they're safety hazards. Um, the rusty surfaces and the exposed screws that you mentioned earlier, um, or you mentioned, um, and you know, and damaged walkways put anyone using the park at risk, um, especially kids who still try to play there, um, because it is a well-used park. A neglected park also invites the kind of activity that makes residents feel unsafe. By using some of the available grant funding to restore this space, we can bring the park back to life, making it safe, welcoming and a true asset to the neighborhood once again. So thank you for your time and for considering this investment and the health and safety of our community.
Thank you. Anthony Segret. Followed by Carla Bloxton.
Anthony Segret, six oh one South Palmway. Mayor Commissioners. Um, as I said, uh, la, in last meeting, um, you know, it's it's great that we have these choices and it is difficult to to make them. Um, I I I would echo the sentiments that were were brought up in last meeting about maintenance of the park. You know, if we go forward and and do these repairs, we can't let it get back into the situation that it's in today. Um, I know the a business owner that actually neighbors the park and there there's a lot more going on there other than than just deteriorated equipment. You know, there's drug activity, there's prostitution, there there's things that make that park unsafe for the children and families. And hopefully in revitalizing it, we can get rid of that element, but I think it will also take special attention from the city and and PBSO to monitor that and kind of change the mode of of um, operation kind of, you know, what's going on there now. Um, I would be in support of that park being re revitalized. It it needs it. Um, I'm also in support of um, doing the work on the gymnasium. Um, I I think that's very important and it sounds like we can take care of the roof with other funds. Um, being in the business I am in, I I know the importance of having a roof, um, you know, in in working in the disaster world, but if we can take care of that with other funds and and take care of the gymnasium, I think that's a wonderful compromise. And I would be fully in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Carla Bloxton.
Carla Bloxton, eighteen oh two Pierce Drive. Um, I'm really torn because I am in District One a lot and I know the need that we have in that community and I know that the gym and the Osborne Center is used a lot. I am going to pivot to say, let's support Tropical Ridge only because we have to show the same amount of fairness and equity that we give to District One to Tropical Ridge. And so this should be their year. And we can always go back and say what we can do next year, but while we wait for next year, that community is suffering. Those kids are suffering. So Tropical Ridge deserves our vote. And I would gladly speak for the Wimbley Gym because I am there often and the bathroom backs up often. The HVAC system does not work often and these kids, like in Tropical Ridge, they have nowhere else to go. This is their visit to the park. This is their visit to Cedar Point. This is their visit to Disneyland because they are not given those opportunities. So let's step up for the kids that deserve our help. And I certainly would like to have the gym, the Osborne Center after it's been redone. It's beautiful and I would love us to uh, work on the roof. But kids need us to step up and give support to them this year. And this is an opportunity where we're gonna get two for one and two in the same year. And I think that Tropical Ridge kids need it and so do the kids at the gym. So please support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, you're up.
First comment from Sam Smith, one oh nine North Palmway. I'm against to continued discrimination against the children and families who live in the northeast quadrant of the city. The entire area north of Lucerne to the canal between West Palm Beach and Lake Worth Beach and east of Federal have no playgrounds or open play space. This is three or four more neighborhoods and a quarter of the city. Each time playground or recreation improvements come up in the city, the northeast area of the city is ignored. There is no place for our children to play and that needs to change. I am against these funds going to any area other than the northeast quadrant of the city, which has no recreation spaces at all for the children. William Lofton, North A Street. I am a taxpayer resident and business owner in Tropical Ridge Neighborhood. I was a former officer of Tropical Ridge Neighborhood Association. I would like the city commissioners and mayor to approve the CDBG funding for Tropical Ridge Fitness Park. Since the fitness park was built, the city has rarely renovated nor updated the equipment. The fitness park is used quite frequently by Tropical Ridge residents. For the small plot of land, it is very active twenty-four hours a day. It's where parents can work out and watch their children use the playground equipment. Because of a lack of supervision such as a park ranger or police officers, the park has drug addicts that share the same space as well. I think the city commissioners and mayor need to move forward with cha, with charging parking downtown so this revenue can be used to have park rangers supervise the parks in in the city. No one is going to pay for parking garage when there is free parking everywhere. The city is missing out on millions of dollars of revenue by not charging paid parking. The downtown parking revenue could be used to pay for park rangers. Please approve to renovate Tropical Ridge Fitness Park. Stephanie Mayo, North B Street. Good evening, city commissioners and mayor. I support the CDBG funds to be used in District Three. The fund should not only go to one district year after year. There are other districts that have needs as well and have been neglected for over ten to twenty years. Tropical Ridge Fitness is a highly popular fitness park used by all ages and used twenty-four hours a day. Excuse me. The equipment is rusted, seats are missing, the concrete cracked and other neglected areas that the city did not have the funding to repair. Many children use the playground after school and on the weekends. This allows the parents to work out as well. We need paid parking in downtown to generate more revenue for all the districts in the city. Please approve the Tropical Ridge Fitness Park for CDBG funds. Michael D, North D Street. My name is Michael and my mom was very active on the Tropical Ridge Neighborhood Association. She would visit that park once a week to clean up the litter or water the the drought resistant plants. The association now barely does any of that. The officers from two years ago were very active and effective. I lived here for over thirty years in the city of Lake Worth Beach and I know that Tropical Fitness Park is an active park from sunup to sundown. Park rangers are definitely needed citywide in all the parks. Lake Worth Beach is the only city with no park rangers. The residents of Tropical Ridge in the past years have asked for maintenance and funding for the fitness park, but Tropical residents had often felt ignored. Do not ignore us now. Tropical Ridge needs a CDBG funding to renovate our park. Go drive by, buy it and visit it. I'm can, I am commenting on here to request that Mimi May, Sarah Malaga and Betty Rash approve the funding for Tropical Ridge Fitness Park. Richard Mahler, seventeen sixty-seven fifteenth Avenue North. Lake Worth Beach's parks and youth sports spaces should be the jewel of our municipal portfolio, reflecting our community's commitment to quality recreation and public well-being. These spaces deserve our full attention, not just in the short term, but with sustainable, long-term care. Much like other members of the commission, I do not support improvements to greenways that are already mismanaged. For too long, the set it and forget it approach to beautification throughout the city without proper infrastructure and maintenance is no longer sustainable or defensible. I fully support Activity Three, which includes much-needed modernizing HVAC systems, improving restroom facilities, enhancing the front entrance and upgrading athletic equipment will make this facility a more functional and welcoming space for all residents. Additionally, I sup, I strongly support Activity Four, which includes key improvements to the Osborne Community Center campus. The planned roof replacement, athletic field re-sodding at Howard Park enhancements to the Youth Empowerment Center are critical and much-needed investments in our city's recreational and youth development infrastructure. These projects are not just upgrades. They are essential commitments to the future of our parks, our youth and our community. And the last comment ends from Sylvia Van, North Street. This is for the approval of CDBG funds to be used in District Three. Tropical Ridge Fitness, Trop, District Three have have not received CDBG funds. I would like to commend Jerry, the the grant analyst for pointing out Tropical Ridge Fitness Park. I had been trying to get renovations for this park a long time and often been ignored. Since federal and state funding is decreasing, it is more urgent than Trop, that Tropical Ridge Fitness Park receives the CDBG funds. It is a very popular park. It's used twenty-four hours a day. Please approve this. That's the final comment I have actually this evening, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Oh. Yeah, well, then we were just saying, wait, twenty-four states only opens. Lighting. Okay, so we have a motion in a second um, for Tropical Ridge and the gym. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you. You do so, you're like the guy behind the scenes that does all the work that gets us the stuff. So thank you very much for everything you do.
Glad to do it.
Jerry, can you please take off the ninth and the eleventh streets because we cannot do those until we fix the flooding. So even having those on there is just frustrating. And we don't want Sarah frustrated. We need to fix the flooding. Thank you so much. Okay. New business agreement with CPG Architects for professional services related to the Public Works Fleet Facility Design and Construction Administration um, services. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Okay. Okay, we have a second. We have a question from Ms. Malaga. So we've been.
Sorry, do we have a second?
Yes, from this, uh, from Mr. McBoy.
So this is, I call it the dream garage.
Yes, it is.
For all those listening, it's for all of our fleet and other things. Um, do we have an estimate, uh, and I don't want to say what's happening across the world right now, but do we have an estimate on the total cost of the garage at this moment?
At this moment? No. We have the estimate uh, based on when we kind of wrapped everything up. We have the estimate based on when we kind of wrapped everything up.
Two years ago.
Yes. When this whole thing kind of fell apart because the architect we had hired the first time around through our process, Akai, they went out of business. Luckily, the construction drawings had been completed at that point because had they not, this would have been substantially more because basically we would have been paying for all this design twice and we would have started over.
Will CPZ be able to get us an updated cost and estimate soon?
Absolutely. That's part of the whole process of providing a probable cost based on current material rates and everything else.
Can we put a 25 or 20% over on that just to be safe?
We're going to have to address something with the talks of possible tariffs on aluminum and steel, everything else. So yes, but yeah, that's obviously one of the big things because once this gets approved, they basically go back through the entire construction set of documents since they are now, and the reason it's more pricey than it should be is because they are taking on the liability for the project and also assuming the architect of record.
Understood.
Which is different when you're not the people who actually designed the actual initial project. You have to go back through there since you're now taking responsibility for it.
I just, I know that we're paying a half a million dollars for them to do this. I just, I mean, I'm fearful because when we started talking about this two and a half, three years ago, what our number was.
Yep.
And I'm really afraid of what the new number is going to come out.
I understand. Like I said before, you know, I was just down at Oakland Park, looking at their new facility. They just had the ribbon cutting three weeks ago for their new Public Works slash Fleet facility, which also has an EOC incorporated in it, which is exactly what we're doing here. Obviously theirs is substantially larger than what we're looking at, but they put a good deal of money into that. So, yes. Every year we run through that season, we don't like to talk about and escape that with our current garage intact. It's always a blessing. It is extremely old and...
How much is it insured for? Oh, stop it. Say, I mean, okay.
Yes. So.
Okay, we have one public comment from Anthony Segrich.
Anthony Segrich, 61, South Palmway. Mayor, Commissioners. When looking at the backup for this, it really, there really wasn't any information on what the process was to do to select CPZ architects. So I did a bunch of information requests and found out that we only had one vendor eligible and the other two vendors were disqualified based on a requirement that wasn't in the original RFQ. The original RFQ was for construction management services. It was not to assume architect of record. That came up in the Q and A. And when the other two were disqualified, at least one of them immediately appealed to rectify the discrepancy and sent in their architect license and said they would assume architect of record, but the city staff did not even bother to evaluate them. The Consultants Competitive Negotiation Act basically states that there really should be no fewer than three bidders considered, except under extenuating circumstances. And the point of that is to get the city the best deal, to get the taxpayers, the best qualified consultants working on things. And here we basically have just selected one before giving you guys the chance to even evaluate the other proposals that came in. We had three. I think there might have been a little bit of miscommunication in what the actual RFQ was. If it was to get an architect of record, there should have been an RFQ that had architect of record as a non-negotiable. But it didn't. It was construction management. So I'm urging you guys to ask staff to possibly either go back and consider the proposal from PSA Management, who did submit their architecture license within the appeal timeframe, or ask staff to go back and actually ask for a RFQ for an architect of record and for a building, a construction management. I think you might have qualified candidates.
Okay, we have Jamie. Would you like to respond?
Oh, yeah, unfortunately, that's inaccurate. I do have our assistant director for procurement, Valentina here, who can go over what the process was. She is the one who, anytime we put out RFPs, RFQs, IFBs, whatever happens to be, she is the one they all run through so she can provide some accurate information.
So.
It's on.
It wasn't there. Valentina Sustada, Assistant Finance Director. Valentina Sustada, Assistant Finance Director for Procurement. So we went through the request for qualification process. We put a scope of work together and during the question period, we did receive additional questions, which were clarification to our request for qualification scope of work. We addressed that and one of the requirements was, Mr. Segrich is correct, to basically assume responsibility of architect of the record. However, in our request for qualification, we did describe in a scope of work what was the requirement and it was to take over the project and take over all the drawings and permits, do the bidding process and then take over and do the construction, construction management. We did receive three qualification documents. We assembled the evaluation committee. Evaluation committee went through those proposals and at that time, they disqualified two companies that did not submit documentation to verify that they have architect. At that time, they basically shortlisted one company. We went CPZ, then we went, evaluation committee met one more time. We listened to their presentations and after that, they recommended, recommended to go ahead with recommendation to you to negotiate a contract and to come to you with this. We have followed the process. This was consulted with the city attorney during the evaluation meeting, whether we can actually go ahead and choose one company further through the CCNA process and we were told that we are okay. And that's basically what happened. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say one more thing. We have not received the appeal or protest. There is a rules that are supposed to be followed. So the city has not received the protest to actually address it. So I'm not sure where this is coming from, but we have not received the protest.
Thank you so much. Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Just, this was very helpful and I guess just maybe a comment or two from the city manager because you've probably been involved in it. Do you feel pretty comfortable that as well, that we, I'm hearing that we have followed the process as we're supposed to do and, you know, we weren't involved in that. So we are dependent on you to reassure us. Can you reassure us that we're on, everything's good?
Yeah, very comfortable because Valentina, this is what, you know, she's very good at what she does. And as she mentioned, we do go through our city attorney, especially when it's at CCNA things. And if we don't get a large number of submittals that people put in, we always make sure that we're kind of covering our bases and even from a legal standpoint. But, you know, the whole point in this was to have that architect of record, you know, the companies that put in, that's more about, I would expect them to put in for the actual construction of this project. What we didn't want was someone like a GC or something to come in and then have a subcontractor as an architectural firm. We don't want to pay for the architectural costs and then have a GC put another 10 or 12% on top of that for those services. We want an architectural firm as the prime, not the sub, which is what we're ending up with. And then they, and then the owners we're contracting with, then they are now in charge of bringing their own subs on underneath that for MEP, mechanical engineering, plumbing, everything else that's going to be required to take that through construction management. But we only have one contract. That's with the architectural firm who's then going to be providing CEI and everything else. So.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And now the big truck rental.
No. Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
We'll pick up the garbage.
We'll pick up the garbage.
We really ought to make Jamie work a little harder for it.
I was going to. I am a little bit. Yeah, just real quick, Madam Mayor, if you don't mind. Um, yeah, so last Friday, we actually were down five vehicles, 53, 77, 162, 164, 165. We did get 163 back, so that's back in today. We have another vehicle, but this is everything from rear load, three one-arm pieces of equipment. It's just one of those things that when it rains, it pours. We need something in place for when this happens. And as you're going to see in the upcoming budget, every year we're going to have a line item just for situations like this, hoping we don't have to use it, but unfortunately.
This year we did.
We had to use it this year. Yes.
Do you want to take a comfort break or?
No, we're almost done.
Okay. So we are now, okay, we're going to take a, all right, we're going to take a little comfort break. We're going to go get comfortable. It's always her. He's fine.
Okay. Okay, let's do this.
Are we?
Um, Vice Mayor, can you close the door behind you, please?
Good night, Tiana. Don't go before we say what an amazing job you did at Sunfest. Well, I know. We have to figure.
Mayor, it's seven fifty-three and we are still live.
Thank you. Um, okay. Now we're, now, kids. Now we are at commission comments and um, that sort of thing. So let's, let's start with District One.
Um, thank you, Adam Mayor. I come bearing not such good news tonight. Um, on Monday, we have what's called the Legislative Update with the League of Cities. And being that I sit on the Advisory Committee, um, on a couple of different boards, I wanted to bring some stuff to light, which unfortunately I already gave, um, interim city manager a glimpse into the near bleak future for the state of Florida. Um, I actually sent this out to all the neighborhood associations as well and asked them to share this information and please write your state legislators, your senators and your representatives with the link on how to find their information. So a couple of things that we really need to keep our eye on that are moving forward. Um, and the scariest one right now is House Bill three oh one and Senate Bill fifteen seventy, which is the sovereign immunity, which is basically lawsuits against your local municipality. Um, has already passed its first committee of reference, has two more House committee stops, has not received a committee reference for the Senate side yet, but they think it's going to be fast tracked. So basically what that means is every time we get sued, right now, the state cap is two hundred thousand dollars per person, three hundred thousand per incident. They are pushing for one million, three million. So every time somebody sues the city, the cap would go up to one million per person or three million per incident. This, the Florida League of Cities is fighting hard against this. Um, I even went into the lobbyist notes to see how many times our lobby, uh, his name is Jeff, um, that goes up there, wanted to see how many times he's actually been pounding on them. So this is one that we need to, it's boomeranged back. So they have been fighting it for years. It keeps coming back. It's not going to go away this year. So we have to be financially prepared for some kind of increase on sovereign immunity. And they're looking at effective data as of July twenty twenty-five. There's number one. Um, number, no, we are self-injured.
Could, would it, from your experience and your conversations, would it be appropriate for us either as a body or individually or whatever seems most effective to put letters in?
Oh, absolutely. That's why I shared it with all the neighborhood associations and said, please contact your state representatives and your.
I mean.
Yeah, no, and us, yes. Um, I'll, I'll be up there in three weeks for Legislative Week, again, doing what we do. Um, even if a letter from the body all signed on one page, I've actually, thank you to Yannick and Monica and Finance. They've been helping me gather data and hard facts that have been being used on the Florida League of Cities side, fighting these bad bills. Um, normally I bring positive stuff, but I just feel like everyone is so concerned right now on things that are happening on a, on a national level. We really need to pay attention to what's happening here and what's going to affect your pocketbooks, your services. Um, I had a conversation via text this morning with the, um, head, one of the head lobbyists for the local, um, international firefighters. They're up in Tallahassee. They're there for the next two weeks, fighting one of the bills that is to take away property taxes. Because that property tax bill will destroy the ability to fund firefighters and police and EMS. So this is another bill that, I mean, they're up there for two weeks solid, fighting this and trying to talk some sense into some of these policymakers. But yes, Mr. McVoy, to your, to your point, I will help. I will craft stuff. I've sent some stuff to Jamie and anything that we can do, absolutely. Um, the other one that's gonna pass is, um, like, we talked about this last year, enterprise funds, which is how we transfer money from water, sewer, electric into the general fund. They're gonna cap it at eight, uh, ten percent, which is fine because we're at eight percent. We already have policies in place. But they're taking away the surcharge. So meaning people outside of our servicing, outside, inside the servicing area, but with outside of the city limits, they charge, we charge them a premium for receiving our services. The state's taking that away. So all of these financial grabs, in addition to them trying to stop CRA, they're basically taking everything away. Um, and this is scary stuff because financially it could destroy the cities. They're also making some really bad changes in regards to, and I think that you're on land use, right, ma'am? So that I'm sure the mayor will give a land use update once there's more solid, but there's some really bad land use that basically is saying the city is no longer going to have any checks and balances. They're not gonna have, we're not gonna be able to have things presented to Planning and Zoning, Historical Board, or to the city, to the City Commission. It'll be basically streamlined through, and Liz was looking at me because some of the stuff is dreadful, streamlined through the staff. If it's affordable housing, if it's anything to do with live local, they are basically taking all of the control away from municipalities right now and giving it to, you want to talk about developers, giving it to the developers. If they're ticking off the check marks, then we are losing control. So just, I'm gonna continue to give these updates. I'll be in Tallahassee in a couple of weeks. I will give another update, but please keep an eye on what's happening locally. This is what affects your day to day. This is what affects your service that we are able to give to you. I mean, we're up here talking about six hundred thousand dollars that we're thankful for and funding. All of those funds could go away. So we just really need to be conservative right now, um, and be mindful. They're also on the national level, still trying to take away the, um, tax exemptions from bonds. And that could be, again, detrimental to our finances. I don't mean to be doom and gloom. Mr. Diaz is looking at me like, God, you're so cheerful. Um, but I just, I, I'm trying to be realistic with everybody who's listening. This is what's really happening that we need to be focusing on. Okay, guys? So that's all I have for tonight. Thank you. Uh, District Two.
Yeah, I have two different areas, uh, two different areas. Um, I'm sure that all of my colleagues here are aware that Border Patrol vehicles, both marked and unmarked, were in our city last week. What you might not be aware of is that they were at different times on the grounds of a church and close to a school. If Border Patrol, the federal folks, have judge-signed warrants, then they are presumably correctly looking for individually identified residents with at least alleged criminal activity. And what I want to be very clear about is that I personally, and as Commissioner, and all of the immigrant community for years that I've had contact with, um, are very clear that if Border Patrol is going after folks who have a criminal situation, violent criminal sort of thing, the community is a hundred percent behind deportation of those folks. There's no issue with that. That said, there are two issues that I want to draw to our attention here on the commission. One is when there are untargeted sweeps, so not judge-signed warrants, but just folks showing up, looking to pick people up off the street. That's picking up hardworking family members in this community. And in many cases, family members who are in our legal processes, who have initiated the steps. And I don't know how to communicate effectively to all of you the level of fear that there is and what it does to families. We have many families across the country, but here also that are mixed fam, what are called mixed families. Some parts of the family have full-on American citizenship. Other parts are in process. They may be further into the process, less further into the process. They have varying degrees of documentation. This sort of folks showing up and just picking people up somewhat at random, um, is very frightening to the Haitian community, to the Latin American community. The other point that I want to draw attention to in relation to that is something that is known in the law enforcement world all across the country. And that is when your immigrant community loses trust in the law enforcement community, things get worse. It gets much harder to do law enforcement. I fully understand that Sheriff Bradshaw and our Captain, uh, Karn here in District fourteen have a very difficult task. They're getting some strong direction at the federal level. But they're also trying to make sure that they're doing things in such a way that law enforcement doesn't suffer. It's not easy. Uh, I'm in communication with, with both of them on it. I just ask that as a commission, as we express support for human rights, which I think all of us feel very strongly, human rights is a big deal, and that we do support as a community, let's be very conscious of the deep level of fear in many families in our community and work together with PBSO to do whatever we can to help reduce that fear. That's Area One. Thank you for your attention to that. Um, the other is I want to thank my colleagues a lot for, at the pre-agenda meeting on Friday, expressing what I understood to be consensus for staff to try to provide the public and the commission with clear numbers on the W Motor proposal. We heard a lot of comments today about, you know, what a great proposal, what things it will do. We also heard a lot of comments that people are very concerned about the numbers. And there are simple solutions to address that. Get the numbers out clearly for all of us. What I understood that there was agreement for staff to put together for all of us to have and all of us to look at the numbers and the community to kick them around, were four things. A clear layout of the parking spaces. What spaces are we losing? What spaces are we requiring of the project? How many will be provided? How many, where they will be located and who's paying for it? That needs to be clear for all of us, so that there's not, oh, well, we're getting this, or we're getting that, or we might be getting this, or we might be getting that. Let's get those numbers out. And I heard consensus to do that, to ask staff to do that on Friday. There was also, that's one. Number two was a clear description of the parking revenue streams. And this is a little complicated because the parking revenue stream, as somebody mentioned in the comments today, nobody's going to park in a paid parking garage if there's free parking on the street. So the analysis of what the revenue streams look like for the parking garage depend on what we do with paid parking, with resident decals, and we haven't decided any of those. That means that to do a fair analysis, we need to run and probably have to go back to double G I, W G I to get them to do that. Run the analysis with the different scenarios. Free street parking, not free street parking, resident, what are the, whatever the appropriate number scenario, I'm guessing three would do it. We've all talked here about the problems with the mid and Seventeenth Avenue and Sixteenth Avenue that clearly, however we calculated the parking requirements for the mid, didn't work very well. And we've had, um, our director of that department say, well, that's a management problem of the mid. They should be managing their rental contracts so that everybody knows what's what and that you can't just have fifteen cars on the street. One of the things that I think there was agreement for on Friday was, let's get a clear written plan of what W Motor would include in their contracts with the apartment folks, so that we had this off at the pass. That we don't have our director coming back in five years or two years or whatever, saying, you know, there's a management problem, they're not managing it. Get them to write it in now. Put on paper what they're gonna tell their residents as far as guest parking, as far as extra car parking. We need to push on that one. Um, and then one that we've talked about several times here, that there seems to be a lot of consensus. We've all agreed, I think, that there's a parking problem, a parking shortage in downtown Lake Worth. Why would we bring into our city a big project that might have fifty thousand visitors a year who probably won't walk here, probably will have some cars associated, and a big apartment building, which probably will have some cars associated? Why would we give that project a twenty-five percent reduction in their parking requirements? When we've said we have a shortage? That makes no sense. We need to get that clarified. I've been trying to get a clear answer from legal. Do we, as a commission, have the option to say, no, we're not doing that twenty-five percent reduction? That doesn't make sense. I've been told verbally that, yes, we as a commission can give that direction. That in the negotiations on the parking requirements, sorry, no to the twenty-five percent reduction. I think we need to give a clear message because it's not fair to the attorneys to have to try to negotiate. And then we come along and say, well, yeah, that twenty-five percent, that never did make any sense. Uh, we need to fix that. We are several meetings behind on getting the parking agreement. The critical path thing that the developer had asked for, we should have had that several meetings ago. Clearly, there are some issues between our negotiators for the city and the developer, and we're not out of the woods. Please don't interrupt. Thank you. Um, we need to give clear direction of what we, we are the public party out of the three of a public-private partnership. That's us. We need to give clear direction to staff so that they can do the negotiating on our behalf and make sure they are representing what we in fact need them to do. I believe that long before a parking agreement is brought to us to vote on, all these numbers have to be out in the community, kicked around. Everybody says, yes, we agree on these numbers. This is an accurate assessment of what's gonna happen. There's time for the business community to say, wow, we are getting X number of parking spots. I thought we were getting more. Or under this scenario, maybe we'd get that many. Under that scenario, maybe not. I have heard from William in some of my requests for information, that there might be an issue with the underground parking, that it might not generate as many parking spots as was originally projected. So that needs to get factored in. Do two scenarios, one with the original number, one with whatever the best estimate reduced is. I've been told clearly multiple times by William, Mr. Waters, Director of Community Sustainability, that they can't tell us what the number of parking spaces is until the entitlement agreement is worked out. I find that to be a very unusual situation. How can we agree to an agreement if we don't know what those numbers are? Make some estimates, make a couple of different estimates. Hey, if you call it a museum and it's a hundred percent museum, then the parking requirement is two hundred per, or one per X number of square feet. If it's half retail and half museum, then it's something else. Make your best estimate of what those scenarios are and give them the numbers. Here's the thing. I think we can all agree that this development is going to bring more cars into the community. I don't think there's any two ways about that. Either those cars, whatever extra, doesn't get dealt with onsite. The museum has very little onsite parking, so that's gotta happen somewhere else. The apartment building may have enough onsite, but maybe not, depending on how many you assume a single, a one-bedroom apartment or a two-bedroom apartment will need in reality. Um, those extra parking, those extra cars are going to go somewhere. If we say in the parking agreement, nope, you don't get any spots for your guest parking or your overflow parking from the apartment in the garage. Nope, you don't get any W Motor parking in the garage. It's all for the public. Where are those cars gonna be? They're gonna be on the street. We already said that we have a parking problem. This is why all of these numbers in whatever the appropriate suite of scenarios are need to be clearly out so that we can tell business owners, when you ask for a parking garage, you know what you're getting. We already have a situation that we know clearly at the national level that tariffs seem to be in the horizon. I believe they went into effect today or yesterday. We've agreed on a maximum price for the garage. So we can't do anything with that. What happens when it's more expensive than what we're predicting now with twenty-five percent tariffs? The answer is we reduce the number of parking spots.
Don't, don't interrupt, don't interrupt.
The price is, but if it costs more, because they, they will, that force majeure, they will be able to pass those costs on. Guaranteed, they're not gonna eat the twenty-five percent cost of materials. If we have to reduce the number of spots, how does that figure into this whole thing? Because that is not something that people can say, oh, we, well, we never thought of that. Of course, we should think about it. So we need to have much more solid, clear, agreed-upon numbers before we move forward with any votes on things. And I'm grateful to my colleagues for having agreed that staff will work to get those numbers out and we can all kick them around. Thank you.
Thank you. District three?
I'm going to go a lot lighter than that side of the room. So I'm going to talk about the liaison with the NAPC. And so a couple of things. First, the Friday night before Raff, Raff Race, the Friday night before street painting was the great taste of Lake Worth. And we, I feel in all the years that we've done it, which is like five or six now, it was the best one that we've done. We had so many of the businesses participating and it wasn't, it didn't feel crowded because there were so many places to go. And I mean, past years, when I was done, I had to go out for dinner because I was hungry. Not this year. I mean, it really was fabulous and, and the new Cantina Americana really knocked it out of the park. They gave 17 different, different things out that night.
Wow.
The, and like the tattoo parlor was involved and you got to have like little stick on tattoos. Yes, free tattoos removable. So it was, it was really well received. It went really smoothly and I really love that we do that the night before street painting. And I love that the city trusts us to be able to do that and that it then leads into the next day, which the next, the street painting festival, fabulous. I want to thank the leisure services department. Tiana, please, 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 please tell all your staff how fabulous it was. And Dan from Sun Fest did a fabulous job. That he was hands on the whole time. He was available, everybody was available. I mean, literally the only thing complaint I heard was that there wasn't any hand soap outside of one set of bathrooms. If that's the biggest problem, we're okay. So I've got to say, what a great job it was. I know that you were worried, but it was fabulous and it can only get better. So a couple of things coming up. Downtown Jewel is having their annual fluffing, I can't say that. Fluffing, it's like golf with an F L at the beginning. Florida Urban Golf, that is on March 22nd. There are tickets left there at Tacky Tourist and or Paws on the Ave. The Raff Race theme for the Fourth of July this week, this year has been selected. And we are doing, I'm no, I'm going to tell you what it is. We, we also have a call out to artists because we need logos and this, the, all of the designs to put all over the swag. So the theme is summer camp. This one time at the Raff Race, after the American Pie part, this one time at Band Camp. And every night of the parties, it'll be like a different, like it'll be Band Camp or it'll be, you know, different kinds of camps each night for each one of the parties. We think, yes, Sarah, Bible, actually that is one Bible study fat camp. I mean, who knows, there's so many you could do.
Horse camp.
Yeah. So anyway, if you are interested in being part of the committee, let me know and I will let you know when the, when the meetings are. You don't have to be part of the NAPC to be part of the committee that plans the Fourth of July week. Let's see. April 2nd and I'm.
Can you go back to that? Are we going to actually have a float for the first time since we've been in commission? Or a, or be part of it? Cause the commission's never.
It was the last time was when Mike Bornstein was here and they did the flamingos.
And, and Herman, I think was part of that. So that shows that nobody, we haven't done it since.
So yes, one time at City Camp. All right. Well, we can figure that out. Okay. Let me just keep going here. So also April 2nd, at from six to nine at the Bamboo Room. There is the second annual fundraiser for the schools that is done by a couple of people that put it off from Parrot Cove. And last year it's music for, so I forget the little logo, but they'll, they'll tell you about it. But last year they raised $16,000. This year the goal is $50,000 and it goes through the education foundation so that it, and then it goes directly to the schools. Last year it went to two schools. This year it's going to all the schools.
In, in Lake Worth.
In Lake Worth Beach. Oh yeah. No, nowhere else. And it goes to support the arts. So it buys instruments, paint, things that artists or art teachers want to do, but don't have the standard supplies. I mean, you can only do so much with tempera paint or whatever that stuff's called. So April 2nd at Bamboo Room, there's going to be a, it's free to go, but then there'll be a silent auction and donations and you can, so you can go and have fun and then get there and feel very generous. And I do serve liquor now. Last thing I wanted to talk about was I, I went over to Spillway Park and you know, I was thinking about the Sam Smith comment about nowhere to play. Well, the other morning I went for a walk and I ended up at Spillway Park. And first of all, except for right along the water, it was extremely clean. I talked to the fishermen. I talked to the guy sitting there reading his book. I talked to the lady walking her dog. I talked to the homeless guy that doesn't live there. And everybody was just talking about how peaceful it was and how much they really enjoy that park. So, you know, if you're looking for a peaceful place to sit and watch all the birds, bird watching was amazing up there. I even took a picture of the snail and, and texted it to Ronaldo. I'm like, what is this? And he was like, apple snail. That's what I thought it was. Obviously he knew what it was. They're huge. So if you go right down by the water, there's snail shells that are like this big. They're awesome. So I just wanted to put in a plug for the Spillway Park because that's in district three. And that's it for me.
Well, I just, I got a letter today from someone wanting to talk more about the, by the boat lift in that park, which we have been opposed to.
Mr. Diaz. Fishing is terrible there. Don't, don't clog up the waterway. Yeah, that is a well loved park. And every time I'm there, you capture, right? The, the park is pristine and that water, especially now that Lake Okeechobee water is being discharged is far from it unfortunately. But so really all I had was after our last meeting, I went to our Lake Worth Lagoon Initiative Steering Committee meeting and speaking of clean water. And we, it was great to talk about or get an update. Let me change that. We got a legislative update. There was a, this was a good one in that our project that staff and you know, we've worked on really hard is, is being taken up there by the county to be advocated for regarding getting money. Here's the nice, here's the nice printout. Yeah.
Now it's got our project on there, the county's project.
Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah.
Fired.
So I'll let, I'll let Jamie update on that then.
But Tallahassee, we should be talking about this.
Right. And I have a, I have a stack of these I'll give you, but you know, there was also another like kind of request from Deb Drum, who's the director of our county environmental resources management. And that's at the same time, they're still going to advocate for us on this, but at the same time, we'll be applying for one of the only DEP, it is the only DEP grant that's open right now that also could apply to what we're suggesting. And as a reminder, it involves a stormwater management infrastructure and small living shoreline project at South Ninth on the lagoon. But it also has been brought in to incorporate other things that help keep our waterways clean, like nice garbage cans around downtown so they don't get kicked over and end up in drains, things like that. So it's really creative and it's just great to see that a municipality, which happens to be ours, is on that list because for too long, no matter how much I advocated to municipalities that you need to apply for this, it's practically free money. Nobody really went for it. So here we are. Other than that, I'll, I'll try to end on a fun one. And that's this Saturday, another big important event that we have is our library biblio part, Biblio Arte Festival, which the library staff and volunteers work extremely hard to put it together. At street painting, they gave away so many books. A really, really cool bookmark that has a magnifier. Now that I'm old, I need it. So in the, in the library, but you know, Biblio Arte is, is a huge festival, especially for families. She brings in a notable author, books are given away, they're signed. It's always really incredible and a very popular and well attended event. So that one I'm definitely looking forward to.
What time on Saturday?
Saturday 11 AM in the library annex cultural plaza area.
11, 11 to.
That's a good question. A few, it's three. That's what I, yeah, I thought it was either two or three. Yeah.
Right. Picnic.
That's it.
Mr. Brown, before you start, I just have a question, Mr. Brown. Oh, I forgot the mayor, sorry.
You do that. I'll go ahead and ask you a question.
Can we please power wash downtown now that?
Yeah.
Street painting, I, I walked down to meet a constituent today and Lake Avenue is disgusting.
DOT will be dealing with that because they still have, their punch list is enormous for what needs to still be done on Lake and Lasurn as well as.
When is it going to be done? Cause downtown looks gross right now.
There is a lot of work. Power washing it right now, it's going to get dirty again within a day because they're going to be out there grinding papers and everything yet again, because there's a lot of stuff they need to redo.
That's not, I'm talking about spilled food and drinks and gun. It's just, it's, it, you can tell that we had 100, almost 100, I don't know how many people in town. It's just, it's not, and we're in season.
Yep.
I know that it might be a waste of money in some people's eyes, but I don't think it is because it is our downtown.
Yeah.
And I know that there are certain businesses that are doing like right in front, but that's not, I mean, I personally would like to see us. I would like to see us spend the money, even though F dot is, it needs to be done. It's gross.
So it's about, it's depending on who we use, it's usually between 10 and $11,000 per, per shot, which is why we have the CRA shipping in for at least one of those every single year. Again, we can spend the money. It's going to be a mess within the week because DOT still has so, their punch list is incredible.
Yeah.
They're cutting a lot of concrete and everything and there's a lot of ADA ramps that need to be corrected.
Yeah.
I'll just say that the contractor, the FDOT certified contractor that was utilized for Lake and Lasurn is not of the caliber of the contractors that were utilized for the federal highway work. So our project manager has spent days walking with obviously DOT and the entire stretch. There is a very long punch list of things that need to be corrected. So.
Do they have an estimation, estimated time of?
I have not followed, we obviously spoke with Shannon today, but there, there is, they're continually working on this, but I will get an updated schedule from them as far as when a lot of this will get done.
Okay. To spend that money because I mean, it is gross downtown. I mean, it is, I was, that's all I'm going to say.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
Yeah. What about you?
Okay. So.
Unless miraculously, I know the answer to this, but unless miraculously they come back with this punch list can be done in like a couple of weeks, but it needs to be done.
But not just the lake, it's got to go in between because they're so dirty in between, like on Jake.
It's gross. Yeah. And it's from having street painting festival, which was great.
Everything.
But it's street paint festival, people could pay for it since they made the big mess. Thank you for indulging. I apologize. I will not touch my.
And it's a great point because I'll point out this maybe should be something to consider for future street painting contracts.
Yep.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Yeah. Sorry. And it'd be $239 instead of $229.
I've lost control. Okay, a couple of things. I, the street painting festival really was flawless. It was wonderful. The people that, I live right downtown, so all day long, people are walking by and I chat with them and they're just like, this is so cool. I want to live here. I'm like, yeah, well, I do. Feel a little smug about that. The, and, and I'm going to kind of pony up to what, I'm also on a legislative committee and things are grimmer than we can even imagine. They want to eliminate the CRAs. They want no, that series can take note, take on no more debt, no more bonds. They just have to finish up what they've gotten. That's it. And I'm just going to read some language from some, this is a live, they're talking about live local acts. We don't, the live local act. The bill prohibits municipality from taking action that restricts the density of a live local act project, restricts the maximum, we can't restrict the maximum lot size of a live local act. We can't restrict the maximum lot coverage below 70%. We can't restrict the floor area ratio. We can't restrict the height below the hot, highest height allowed after July 2023. It just goes on and on and on about what's going to happen and. Well, this is, these are proposals that are going up in Tallahassee. So we are gird our loins and go up to Tallahassee and do the best picking we can. Absolutely everything about land use, they can absolutely take away our power. They just, they don't want us to have any power over, we can't, we can't restrict density. We can't, if we think the Airbnb thing is interesting. And the developers get attorney's fees, of course. We, we have to exempt or waive 20% of the impact fees associated with the live local act. We can't, there's nothing about parking here. We have to allow them 20% less of the required parking. We have to approve building permit plan review for live local acts within 60 days and they don't have to go to the public and they don't have to go any boards. It's just administratively, if they want it, they can do it. It's pretty egregious and that's just the tip of the, we were on the phone for an hour the other day, Monday morning. So wish us luck when we go up there and it's, it's just a little bit grim. On that note, I.
Little addition to that, the Thousand Friends of Florida is a statewide.
Right.
I'm sorry, could you speak into the mic?
Yeah. Thousand Friends of Florida did a webinar, probably January now, on, on the previous live local act one that was quite helpful and it had some insights from some other cities that have pushed back on it. I wouldn't be surprised, I haven't seen anything, but I wouldn't be surprised if Thousand Friends is already, you know, tracking this bill and giving suggestions.
No, it's, it's pretty crazy.
That can be a reason for it.
So wish us luck in Tallahassee, which is such a joy to go to because you have to fly to Atlantis, Atlanta, and then take a plane from Atlanta to Tallahassee or drive seven hours. So, but we're working out, we have.
We're going to have fun.
We're going to have fun. It's going to be fun. Other than that, I want.
I'm going to make it fun, damn it.
You do make it fun. Other than that, I mean, I, there's just, there's just a lot going on and, but it's all good. Every time I go out into, I was at a party Sunday night, dinner party Sunday night from people that have mostly from Palm Beach who are talking about Lake Worth in the past year. So it's really, it's coming up. It's, people are noticing that we are a little more business friendly, a little more open to ideas and the Gulf Stream, of course, is a large part of that. So let's just keep up the good work. Mr. City Manager?
Oh yeah, obviously just kind of echo whatever one's already said. Congrats to our leisure services team and pull off the street painting festival. It's been nothing but a lot of positive comments.
And public work, yes.
Just city staff in general. You know, this was the first year kind of venturing out and then kind of doing something a little different. So obviously we've, we'll have the whole after action, but we, things we definitely can improve on everything, but we'll continue to get better as we move on from year to year. I was actually going to cover Biblio Arte, thanks for mentioning that Commissioner Diaz kind of already went through that. I'm always like to promote our city events and our leisure team and everything they're doing. That's fantastic. Friday afternoon, myself and select directors, we have a tool we're giving to our county commissioner, Joel Flores. So we're going to be doing some things at the RO plant, we're talking about the canal and like the electric products we have going on and some other stuff. So I will be hosting him and some members of his staff on Friday. The 18th meeting of March, our second meeting this month, we will have Jared, I talked to Jared earlier, him and Richard Binsky are lobbyists giving a report to us because obviously there is a few things going on in Tallahassee. So we'll be getting an update from them. You already mentioned the Lake Worth Lagoon Initiative. I was going to talk about that and our funding request for 2025. Other than that, I did want to state, I did today officially withdraw the city's application for the Dixie Lane repurposing from DOT because they did decline that. It's always better to withdraw your application because we do have a litany of things and bullet points of things we, we are going to be requesting they do. But it's better to require, withdraw the application than to have an actual denial on the record that they officially. So yeah, obviously in, in working with the TPA and everything, you know, we're, it was, we partnered on this whole thing. So we've got some ideas. I'll be there tomorrow morning at the TPA. So frustrating, same thing happened to West Palm, same thing happened to multiple municipalities. It's even frustrating that they admit that we have a lot of issues and we're at a level D, it's going to continue to get worse as the years go on and it's like, but. And it's like, but we're trying to do things to improve the corridor. You're saying no.
They were going to do that whole.
So now what? So it's kind of like, it's, it's a frustrating thing. We're continuing to deal with it and that's just kind of the back and forth with DOT. So I'll be bringing more forward on that as we move forward in the future here. Other than that, I did want to toss it over to the clerk to end it out. She did have a few updates on election info. We do have obviously an election a week from today and she had a few things she wanted to go through. So I'll pass it over to you, Melissa.
Okay. Yes. So I did want to remind everyone, it's very important to come out for the municipal election, March 11th. It's for Commissioner District Two and District Four. We now have district voting, so only registered voters in districts two and district four can come out and vote. And I want to briefly share my screen so that you, people can see how easy it is to find information about the election, like what district you're in, et cetera. So if you go to, here's our main webpage. If you go to government, you can see very clearly voting and elections. And of course now it's going to be really slow. Okay. So here is polls are open 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM like usual. If you scroll down right here to find your district, click on the link and you put in your address right up here, right here in the top left, and it will pull up your district, which is very helpful if you don't know what district you're living in. And then further on down the page, we have the polling locations. And I don't know if this will open for districts two and four. We only have four, it's not loading, but we only have four polling locations. And there's also links on here, important links. If you want to find your precinct, these are all tied to the supervisor of elections website. So people don't realize the election that affects you personally the most is your municipal election. Please get out and vote. Thank you. I'm sorry, your mic's not on.
I was just trying to, I just was stating that there's another bill about making municipalities now vote in either August or November. That's on, on the chopping block as well.
And the list goes on and on. Okay. So Madam Attorney, anything to report?
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
That's, no news is good news in the, in the legal world. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.